Welcome to the March 28th City Council Meeting. Please stand and salute the flag. Roll call.
Roll call of the members, Counselor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Counselor Fiori.
Here.
Here, Counselor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morbido.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rotundo, absent. Counselor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, and Counsel President Visconti.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of March 14th.
All in favor, all opposed? So order. If my colleagues don't object, I'd like to request a suspension of rules and to take up item 13.
Calendar item number 13, communication from the city auditor requesting payment of Revere TV's quarterly invoice from the cable access receipt reserved fund account.
Good evening, council, and thank you for taking me out of order. Rich Viscay, 21 Broadway, CFO. This is not a new motion. It becomes forward to you every quarter. This is the franchise fees that we collect for our Revere TV operations. So we're literally a pass through. We get that money. We get an invoice from Revere TV and we pay that invoice. The money goes into an account for receipts reserved for appropriation. So I'm before you asking a few for that appropriation. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Viscay. Do we have any questions from the council? Hearing, seeing none, motion to approve. Roll call.
Shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of $263,840.36 from the cable access receipt reserve fund for the purpose of paying Revere TV's quarterly invoice? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiori.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
Back to the order of business.
Calendar item number three, hearing called as ordered on a joint petition submitted by National Grid and Verizon to install one jointly owned pole number 876-50 on Mountain Avenue near the intersection of Mountain Ave. and Cambridge Street to service a new customer at 242 Mountain Ave.
We're going to hear from proponents, those in favor. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Moses Okokuru. I'm here on behalf of National Grid Electric Side. My address is 170 Medford Streets in Malden. So National Grid is petitioning to install a jointly owned pole right beside 242 Mountain Ave. In Revere. This for the purpose of feeding the customer with their new electric service. Thank you.
Okay. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Let's close that side of the hearing. Hearing and seeing none. Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, let's close that side. City councilors, any questions from the city council?
Mr. President, thank you.
Counsel Keefe.
Just want to speak on behalf of this area. This was, this is obviously in Ward Four. This is, this is definitely needed to service that new property that's being built. I believe there was a pole removed during the fire that was over there. And so this would be, and it was an older, it was an older, much older unit. So I would be in favor of getting this property finished and getting the power they so need. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Counsel Silvestri.
Mr. President, through you to National Grid, Moses. The reason the pole was taken, was it due to damage from the fire? Or was it needed to be removed for first responders to have access to the home?
Honestly, I don't remember, you know, correcting the record of how that's happened. I'm not engineer that covers this area, so I can probably go back and find out why.
If we could just make sure it's not a first responder issue. And I think the council would be more improved with that. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Roll, roll call.
Shall the city council grant the petition of National Grid and Verizon to install a new pole for a new service at 242 Mountain Ave? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiori.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been granted. Calendar item number four, hearing called as ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install underground electrical conduits from pole number 2267 to 79 Temple Street.
Proponents, name and address for the record again.
Good evening, council, once again. My name is Moses Okokuru. I'm here on behalf of National Grid Electric Side. My address is 170 Medford Streets in Malden. So National Grid is petitioning to install conduits from my existing pole towards 79 Temple Streets for the purpose of feeding them with electric service. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Councillors, Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Moses, if I could. So this is the home that's being constructed or finished constructing over there, correct? It's right across from the PACE Center?
Well, again, I'm not, I mean, I can look up the...
All right, it, so it is. Let me, let me just ask the work. What kind of, you know, how long is it going to take? And how's it going to impact the area for the residents that are living there currently?
Usually a job like this, it's less than a day's worth of work. They contract on site, they will open up the sidewalk, run the conduits, and then reseal back to normal. Less than a day's worth of work.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Moses. Any trees be, going to be taken down?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We got the tree ward in here. Any other councillors? Hearing and seeing none. Let's take a roll call for this.
Shall the city council grant the petition of National Grid to install underground electrical conduits for service to 79 Temple Street? Counselor Cogliandro. Yes, Counselor Fiori.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido. Yes, Counselor Novoselsky. Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been granted. Next up is unfinished business. Calendar item number five, this is an ordinance amending the revised ordinances of the city of Revere relative to drain layers. This is the third and final reading.
Okay. This is, do we have any questions from the council? Okay, this is a third and final reading? Okay, that is, there's an objection here and the ordinance is going to get tabled.
Next up is the zoning subcommittee report from the meeting of March 1st, I mean, sorry, March 21st, 2022.
Counselor Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had two items in front of us. One was the Enterprise Rental Car Facility looking to go, requesting a zoning change on Squire Road. That was a heavily attended meeting with lots of conversation. We were unable to come to a real final verdict, so we're bringing it back in front of the zoning subcommittee at the next meeting. So that is tabled. And the second item was the Broadway Capital reconstruction of the Salem Street Nursing Center into condominiums. That also had lots of good conversation. We were able to get to a lot of poignant topics, but again, we were unable to reach a final decision. And that will also go in front of the zoning subcommittee again on the meeting. Madam Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, April 11th?
Well, April, I'm sorry, excuse me, it was April 11th at 5:00 PM.
Correct, so both of those items will be back on the docket for April 11th. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next up is the Ways and Means Subcommittee Report.
Counsel Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We took up several items tonight. First one is calendar item number six, an ordinance amending metered rates pertaining to water sewer. That will still lay on the table. We have some questions as to where the cost will be shifted to, and it has been amended to include five and six families as well. So that, that remains on the table. Calendar item number seven, which was a communication from the auditor relative to the ARPA Fund Grant Summary, that was placed on file. Calendar item number eight was a motion by Counselor Fiori requesting the mayor to appear before the city council to explain the 3% charge for people who pay their taxes with a credit card. That motion failed. So, so that will no longer be discussed. Calendar item number nine was a motion presented by Counselor Silvestri to provide $500 of ARPA funds to each first responder. That was amended by Counselor Fiori to 1,000, was voted favorably by the subcommittee and has now been turned over to the administration for their approval and appropriation. Calendar item number 10 was a motion presented by Counsel Fiori that the mayor provide the city council with a list of employees that have take-home vehicles, along with their job titles, their residential addresses, and copies of mileage logs. That was approved unanimously by the city council. And the last two will lay on the table as they were motions by Counselor Rotundo. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Yes, let's take that up individual.
Chairman, I just had one question on, for the ARPA Fund Grant Summary, I thought I had on record that that was going to remain in committee and not being placed on file. Was that? I believe Counselor Fiori had requested more additional information.
Okay, then it will remain in committee.
I had, okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Okay. That was for calendar item number seven. So calendar item number eight, I had that reported out with an unfavorable recommendation. So the committee, the council can still vote on that except the will of the council, so...
A roll call on that. Yes, I had every intentions. It was reported out, but we can do a roll call on that if that's, yeah, we can do a roll call on that.
Point of clarification, the roll call is on the motion. Not on the recommendation. It's on the motion.
What's that? It failed, okay, wait a minute. It failed, it failed in the, in subcommittee. We're going to bring it out and we're going to vote on it here. Okay? That's it. All right, we're going to do a roll call on this.
Mr. President.
Yes.
For clarification, because we always vote in the affirmative, correct? Through you to the clerk, so how the question, how would the question read?
Point of parliamentary procedure, Mr. President.
Hold on.
The, the vote in the committee is a report.
Hold on a second. Counselor, Counselor Sorino has the floor. Can we just hold on one second, please, and let him finish? Thank you. And let Madam Clerk answer the question. Thank you. Go ahead.
My records indicate that it did not receive a favorable recommendation in committee. That is merely the recommendation. Now, the motion on the floor, if Counselor Rizzo was reporting it out, is that the mayor be request, that the mayor and the city solicitor be requested to appear before the city council to explain why the taxpayers, as opposed to the city, are being charged 3% or more to pay taxes with a credit card. That received an unfavorable recommendation out of committee. But the city council still has the ability to vote on that if they, if that's the will of the council.
Okay. So that being said, let's do a roll call on that motion that has been, that failed in subcommittee, okay? And let's take it up with the rest of the council, please. Thank you. Roll call.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiori.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe.
No.
No, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
No.
No, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Sorino.
No.
No, Counselor Silvestri.
No.
No, and Counsel President Visconti.
No.
That motion fails.
Okay. Next.
The next motion that was reported out favorably as amended, that's calendar item number nine, that the mayor be requested to provide all first responders in the city of Revere with $1,000 from ARPA funds for their committed service during the COVID-19 pandemic.
This got tabled? This is, this has been reported out.
No, we voted on it favorably.
That was reported out favorably. Okay. Can we do a roll call, Madam Clerk?
On the motion as amended, Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiori.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti. Motion is approved.
Next motion.
That was calendar item number 10, that received a favorable recommendation coming out of committee.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? All right, so ordered, thank you. Next motion.
Calendar item number 11 is remaining in committee. And number 12 was reported remaining in committee as well. Onto motions, calendar item number 14, that was a motion by Counselor Rotundo, he's not here, typically the city council would hold those over.
Yes, we'll table that.
Calendar item number 15, that's also a motion of Counselor Rotundo.
Let's table that as well.
Calendar item number 16, that's a motion of Counselor Rotundo.
Tabled.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro, the mayor requests the traffic commission to amend section 10.32.211, Commercial Vehicle Parking, Application for Permit, by striking subsection 1 of that section, a valid business certificate must be on file with the city clerk's office for the business associated with the commercial vehicle.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the last couple of weeks, I've received calls from residents and actually police officers that have called, you know, for friends of theirs. So basically, as long as the, the vehicle itself is registered to the address where the person resides, I don't feel the need to have, to have to have the business reside in Revere as well. If it's a company in Woburn and they're taking home a vehicle, that's paying their excise tax here, they're paying the $420 a year, and that person relies on that vehicle to get back and forth to work, I think we could give them a break and, and so they're getting $50 fines every night, $50 a night. So I'm hoping that we can have more of a discussion on this and, you know, we need to help these people as much as we can. Thank you.
Counsel.
Mr. President, just, just if I can ask, through you to Counselor Cogliandro, just on the intent, because I've, I receive these as well, but one question, would these be vehicles that are registered to the city of Revere?
I would be adamant that they were, that we're, we're collecting the excise, you know, all that stuff so that we can, they have, they have to be registered in the city.
Okay. I, I would probably be in favor, but of course, I would have to go in front of the traffic commission anyway, but if they weren't registered to the city, then I'd have a different opinion. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. So through you to Cogli, Counselor Cogliandro, I was one of the makers of this ordinance, and the reason why is because we had a number, enormous number of vehicles, because we didn't have an ordinance that were parking in Revere, they were parking, you know, on the borderline of Everett, Malden, Winthrop, everywhere. So when we weren't doing anything, and they could, because everybody else around them has an ordinance, what we did was, we, if they lived in Revere, then they had to get a sticker, a commercial sticker. I think it's, we went for four, we went from $450 for the commercial sticker if they lived in Revere to 125. I think $125 for a commercial sticker is, is reasonable. And I think that if we're going to open this can of worms again, I think they need to have a sticker on their car, even if they don't have a business here, if, if they have a residence, if, if the vehicle, if they pay an excise tax and the vehicle is owned to the property person, the resident, then they should get a sticker. But what if they have five vehicles, five commercial vehicles, and you're going to let them park in front of everywhere? I mean, we're having a big problem, I know my ward's having a big problem with, we have a property on Winthrop Parkway that has six, they have a limousine, a bus, whatever, on their property, and we're trying to deal with this. So I, I, I'm just saying, I don't think vehicles should be parked, if they don't have any stickers, they shouldn't be parked in, in a resident. That's just my say. Thank you.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I did get a email from one of my constituents and, who has a business and the business is in Malden, she does take the vehicle home. I don't know where it is registered, but they asked for a business certificate, and if the business is in, in Revere, they don't need a business certificate, they wouldn't have a business certificate for, because it's a Revere business, that's what they're looking for, that's what, I'm reading this, and if the business is in Malden, there's no certificate, if they just have their car. Now, again, it may not even be their vehicle, they may take it home for their, for their boss, because it's part of their job, and, but they still should have a permit for it, they can still get that, and I still think it's $420, Counselor. They're paying, they're paying $420.
Then maybe we should change it to 125 and give them a break.
Mr. President, it's not up to us anyways, it's traffic that has to do it. But, so that's a little convoluted as far as that, that definition of a business associated with a commercial vehicle in Revere. If they don't, if it's not in Revere, there is no certificate. So I don't, I can't see why they would, they would need one if it's from out of town.
Okay. Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you. I tend to agree with this motion. You know, just because someone owns a business outside the city, we're going to hit them again for a $420 fee, when they're paying their excise tax here, they live here. Counselor McKenna, though, raises a very valid point. What if you have multiple vehicles? Now, how many vehicles are we talking about have, I mean, I don't know if we could have limitations as to how many vehicles they can park, because I do know that sometimes a commercial business with multiple, multiple vehicles can take up an awful lot of parking from other residents, you know, who just want to come home and be able to park their cars. So I don't know if there's some happy medium as far as limitations or something like that, but, and then the cost is a whole nother issue. Four, I think $420 is, is ridiculous, yeah.
Mr. President, if I may, through you. I just want to, I just want to read the other items that are on the, the commercial list here. So the first one is the one we're trying to strike, which is that they need a valid business certificate on file, okay? Number two, commercial vehicle shall be registered to Revere address. The vehicles, number three, vehicle shall be 10,000 pounds or less, okay? Number four, vehicle shall have less than six wheels. It has to be inspected. There's a lot of things, one, it's one, number six, one commercial vehicle, this was a question that Counselor Rizzo had, number six, one commercial vehicle permit will be issued per household, per household. And the cost of the permit is $420, it doesn't seem to specify whether their business is in Revere or not. I do lean towards $420 is a lot of money. So, but again, this, this change does not change, we're striking this. The only thing that would change is the number on the list that each individual piece is. But again, it has to be a vehicle that's registered in Revere. It has to be registered at the household, they can only have one, can't be a giant, giant dump truck or anything like that. So I think there's a lot of great work that was put into this, Counsel McKenna, I'm not, please, I'm not taking any of that away, but I, I know, I know. But, you know, at, at the end of the day, we have people in this city that work outside the city that are getting $50 tickets, and, you know, I know the parking department's doing their job because they have to follow the ordinances, but again, if we could, you know, change that one just to strike it out, everything else is going to stay in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If I can just, okay, Counsel Silvestri.
Mr. Chair, through you to the motion maker. Just to clarify, is the, does the business owner have to live and reside in Revere? Just to clarify, is the, does the business owner have to live and reside in Revere? Because you said it could be a take-home vehicle. What happens when businesses start registering their vehicles to their employees' homes and we open up a can of worms?
Still one per household and we get the excise tax. If it's a take-home vehicle they need, I honestly don't see the problem, if it's something that they need. I would also even go further to say that if they're using a take-home vehicle, maybe it could take the place of a personal vehicle having a residential sticker, but that's another conversation.
Okay. Counselor Sereno.
Mr. President, thank you. Through you to Counselor Cogliandro. So with regard to someone who, say, you know, like I had a relative who lived in Revere, who his company was based in Needham, and he had his work van that, you know, came back to Revere that he parked in Revere at night. I would think it would be rather cumbersome, I don't know of any other city or town that does that, where you would have to go to your company in Needham or wherever and say, listen, in order to park in Revere, you need to register the van in Revere. I understand maybe having some sort of permit where, you know, the fee is less than $400, but to request any person who takes, takes home a vehicle for various companies, I just don't, I don't know how that would work, how that would be practical.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, thank you, Counselor Sereno. I guess, my only question is, they have been getting ticketed, correct me if I'm wrong, because the car is not registered and they don't have a parking sticker for the vehicle because the excise tax isn't, they're not registering the car here, correct?
Correct. They don't have a business certificate on file with the clerk, so they don't qualify for one.
Okay. So it's because they, they don't, their, their company is not registering the vehicle in our city? Is that correct? I think that's, that's the reason behind it, not because of the business not having a certificate, I think it's because of the, correct me if I'm wrong, and I may be, okay, is because they're registering the vehicle outside of the city and they're unable to get a sticker because of that. Is that what I'm understanding? Is that not correct?
I can give you an instance, sorry, Madam Clerk. Resident on Tapley Ave, vehicle is registered to that address, the business the vehicle's attached to is not in Revere, getting $50 tickets. See what I'm saying?
I understand. Okay. We're going to refer this to the traffic commission? Let's refer this to the traffic commission. Okay.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro, that the city council award certificates of commendation to the Revere eighth-grade girls and seventh-grade boys' travel basketball teams for winning the Metro West North Division Championship.
Counselor Cogliandro.
This is awesome. They deserve to be recognized, they deserve to come up here and.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. It will be scheduled for April 11th. If that works for everyone. If you can get back to the clerk, please.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro, that the city council award certificates of appreciation to Greg Vendetti, Emilio Fusco, April Feeny, and Tyler D'Angelo for their work with children through the Revere High School boxing program.
Counselor Cogliandro.
This one is very near and dear to my heart, being boxing is one of the oldest martial arts ever. I think that this is amazing. Greg Vendetti is a former WBC champion who volunteers his time, as do all the other people on this list. I know there is a name missing and he's asked me not to add him, but at this time I would, I would ask to amend this to add Joseph Singer.
Absolutely.
And I'll, I'll take, I will take the brunt of this punishment from him.
Well, if you didn't add it, I was going to request it, so.
I don't know, he's boxing a lot, I don't know.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Counselor Fiori, that the city council commission the installation of portraits in the city council chambers in honor of the first women elected to the Revere City Council. Ward one counselor Rita Singer, 1975, ward three counselor Vera Curcio, 1975, and the first-at-large counselor Linda Rosa, 1987.
Counselor Fiori. In recognition of National Women's Month, I, I came into the chamber, I was first elected here 31 years ago, and I come into the chamber and I look at all my colleagues on the wall, Mayor Kalala, Mayor Reinstein, Counselor Del Grosso, Guanasso, Mayor Haas, you know, Frandar, Senator, I served with them all and I'm wondering where the women are. They didn't make the wall, the only one I didn't serve with, I think, was Martha Washington on the back wall there. But, you know, I didn't know Vera Curcio, but, you know, she was quite a trailblazer. And when I first came into the chamber, I, I didn't realize that I was serving with trailblazers like Linda Rosa and Rita Singer. You know, Rita was very quiet and she got things done her own way, and Linda, who unfortunately I took after more, is a little more boisterous, but nonetheless, very effective. So it was a treat to serve with them, and I think in recognition of National Women's Month, that we should raise their photos, the fine women. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Ms. President. Ms. President, just through you to Counselor Fiori. Why are these the first women elected to the Revere City Council? Is this by ward, by Counselor-at-large?
My understanding, it's spelled out in the motion, that Ms. Curcio and Ms. Singer were elected in 1975, and Linda Rosa was the first Counselor-at-large elected in 1987.
And you also have Denise Slemmy, who is from ward six, you also have Kathy Penn, who was elected from ward two.
I think the point.
Where do we want to go with this?
We're talking about the first ones elected, you can vote against it if you want. I put the motion in for the first women elected in wards and the first woman elected at large. I'd love to give them all recognition, but, I mean, it's plain and simple, the first ones elected, I mean.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Counselor, you all finished? Okay. Counselor Silvestri.
Yes, so I would like to make a substitute motion and add the youngest female elected to the city of Revere to that motion, if the motion maker would be approved of that.
I have no problem with the amendment.
Counselor Janino, former Counselor Janino.
Counselor Morabito has the floor now.
Thank you, Mr. President. I commend my colleague for putting this forth for Women's History Month. I think it's great, I noticed on the motion, you have your first ward counselors, first at-large counselors. Silvestri made a counselor, Silvestri made an amendment to, youngest counselor. I think we should make an amendment to all the firsts, any first ward two counselor that's a female, ward one, two, three, four, five, six going forward, we already have the at-large pinned down, if you would accept that amendment.
We have plenty of wall space. No, I'm only, I was kidding. What you, I'm just, I'm trying to understand, what's the next motion? What's the amendment?
So Counselor Fiori, right now you have, where are we? Oh my God. So you have ward, first ward one counselor Rita Singer, you have first ward three counselor Vera Curcio, and you have the first at-large counselor. So at-large is covered, ward three is covered, and ward one is covered. So we're missing the first from ward two, the first from ward four, ward five, and ward six, female, if you would amend that.
Point of information, I think you should put Joanne McKenna as the oldest counselor, woman counselor, and the only woman counselor. How's that? No, I really think that we should just keep with the motion, and then I think it's a great motion, I just think we're going to water it down, and the purpose was to have the first women on the council, so I just, that's how I feel. But if you want to put Joanne McKenna off, the oldest, only woman, you know, we can, we can surely do that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sereno.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Do I still have a floor, Mr. President? Sorry. Ah, I wasn't done, okay.
No, no, if you're not done, let's, let's finish, how's that?
Thank you. So if the counselor would accept the amendment, having the first woman of every ward, if there was one, to add to the amendment, I would, think that would be great.
Counselor Fiori.
I think if history serves me correct, there was no ward counselor from ward four, there was no ward counselor ever elected from ward five. I mean, you know, the intent here was to recognize trailblazers, the first people to be elected to the city council.
It's a yes or a no?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't want to vote against my own motion, everybody's well-intended, but.
If you don't want to amend it, you don't have to.
I'm in a tough spot now.
Mr. President, point of information.
Okay, Counselor Sereno.
Point of information on that, Counselor Singer and Counselor Vera Curcio both came in in 1975, so technically, even though there are two and they're from two different wards, they came on in the same year. So that actually, it makes sense why he, why he would have selected, why he would have included those two versus all wards.
Agreed. I'm just going to refer back to Counselor Fiori. Oh, I thought you were done.
No, well, my next, I was going to, I apologize, but I was going to offer to amend it as well, to include our first female city clerk, because we have, or does that happen when you leave?
She's not going anywhere.
No, no. She doesn't want to leave anytime soon.
She's got a long way to go, but that's, I understand. I'm going to, I'm going to refer back to, okay, go ahead. Are you done? All right, I'm going to refer back to Counselor Fiori, because a request was made to you.
I would just, I would ask for a vote on the motion that I proposed.
Okay. So the amendment, there's.
So, Mr. Chair, just to clarify.
Sure.
We're not adding the youngest counselor elected.
At?
Youngest female, substitute motion.
Counselor Fiori.
Mr. President, the members can do as they please. Again, my intent was the first two, first women at large.
We're going to vote it, we're going to vote on it as it is.
Mr. President, just, just a point of information, I believe that Kathy Penn was the first female council president.
Okay. And the first ward two counselor. Wow, okay, this was, this is being dragged up enough, let's, let's, let's vote, there's a subsequent motion on the floor, is that?
Through you, Mr. President, can I add to Counselor's, through you, can I add an amendment to Mr. Silvestri's substitute motion to add the first of ward counselors as well? First female ward counselors as well.
Okay. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to go back to the original motion, okay? You want to speak?
Yes, Mr. President, everyone speaks, everyone speaks. Mr. President, point of personal privilege.
Sure, Counselor Keefe.
Counselor Fiori has a motion. Everyone in this, everyone in this council, mostly everybody, voted to get these packets delivered to them, delivered by the police department. Read the packet, if you want to add a substitute motion, if you want to add to a council's motion, pick up the phone on Friday night, pick up the phone on Saturday, pick up the phone on Sunday.
Point of information.
I'm talking here, I'm talking, let me just.
You can't add a substitute motion on, considering.
No, no. Mister Counselor, Counselor, with respect, because we're losing decorum in this council, we're losing decorum.
This is ridiculous.
Just pick up the phone and talk to them in advance. I mean, really, we, this, the decorum of the council, it's only March, is really, I just, I request that we all take a look at ourselves, and me included, and really respect the council decorum and how we project ourselves to the public of Revere, to our constituents. We're acting, we're really acting unprofessionally. So I'm just requesting that we actually have these conversations in advance, so that it, you know, political banter's one thing, but come on, this is like just jumping on top of each other, this is nuts.
I couldn't agree more. I, you know what? I couldn't agree more, and it really gets to the point where it's frustrating, obviously, from the chair here, I try to give everybody some leeway, okay? And it just seems as though that it gets stretched out and gets taken advantage of sometimes. So we're going to go back to the original motion, we're going to vote the motion as is. If he wants to make a motion on the floor, a separate motion on the floor, for that, he can do that, correct me if I'm wrong. Okay.
Mr. President, as much as it's against my better judgment, why don't we send this to some committee and decide who we want to recognize? Because it was well-intended.
It really was well-intended, and I appreciate it, but you know what? Now that we can't make a decision here, okay, we're going to send it into.
Legislative affairs.
Legislative affairs. Thank you. Next motion.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by counselors McKenna and Morabito that the mayor be requested to take appropriate action to rebuild the stairs, the rear stairs of the senior center in accordance with ADA regulations. Seniors are having a difficult time accessing the senior center from this entryway.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Counselor Morabito and myself, we attended the St. Patrick's Day dinner in the senior center, and the door opened, and Counselor Morabito and myself observed seniors trying to get up these problem stairs. They're not friendly, ADA-friendly staircases, they have poles going up them, they're very short, and it was difficult, even though they were like seven or eight stairs, they were difficult for disabled, semi-disabled seniors to get up the stairs if they parked in the back lot. So this is our motion, and that's all I have to say, I want to hand it over to Counselor Morabito.
Counselor Morabito. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, so to jump, piggyback on what Counselor McKenna said, the stairs are rotten, and after speaking to a couple of the seniors at the St. Patrick's Day party, they suggested maybe a ramp instead of the stairs, because they don't feel comfortable with the stairs. But I was wondering if maybe we can, if the mayor can expedite this and put it in the capital improvement plan, and if it's not already on there.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Morabito. If I can just speak on this for a moment, this was a, a similar motion was put in last year by myself and Counselor, former Counselor Janino, requesting that a ramp be built for the seniors over there. So I support the motion, I would prefer a ramp, if that's, if we don't mind, and we can amend that to make it as a ramp, but this was approved last year as well, not sure where it, where it ended up, but yes, I approve, I support this motion once again. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Counselor McKenna, that the mayor request DCI or Mastaut to remove the graffiti from the Winthrop Avenue Bridge. This is now the third request to the state to address this issue.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the only reason why I'm putting this in, in front of the counselors, because this is my third request and nothing's being done, and what's happening is, there's all graffiti in between the columns of the bridge. And not for nothing, but the bridge is the gateway into Revere Beach, and it shows, you know, the conditions of our city. We, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but graffiti's popping up all over the place, and it needs to be dealt with right away. I don't know if anybody's gone into Boston in the last month, but there's graffiti everywhere, it hasn't been dealt with, and that's probably because of COVID. But we have to get this under control, and we have to start cleaning under our, underpasses, the walls, the buildings, and on Winthrop Ave Bridge, so thank you very much.
Any other questions? Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counselor McKenna, we have a citywide cleanup day coming up on May 7th, maybe we could make that part of it.
Point of information, I don't think the city should be involved in a state, it's a state, it's either a state bridge or it's DCI bridge, I think the. a state, it's either a state bridge or it's DCR bridge. I think the state should be responsible for their property. I don't think it should, there are underpasses that are city property and walls down Revere Beach, if you notice. So, you know, we could do city property, but a lot of, this is state property, and DCR should be, or the state should be responsible for it. And they haven't cleaned it up in seven months. So, thank you. But I agree with you.
The only reason I offered that is because you said this was the third time, you know, so maybe, even though it's not our, our job to do this, it's their property, maybe we can be proactive and do it, you know? Let them know we mean business, kind of, I guess.
All in favor, all opposed on the motion? So ordered. Next motion.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Counselor Serena that the city council send the attached letter regarding transportation improvements to the property management company of the Overlook Ridge Development in North Revere.
Counsel Serena.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, a few weeks ago, I had a meeting of North Revere residents, and, you know, the topic of Roseland and Overlook came up. And as we said last month, I believe it was in February, we sent a, a letter, or we sent a motion requesting an update, and that has gone ignored by Overlook. So I've drafted a strongly worded letter, and if I might, may I read it into the record and see if the council would consider signing on?
Please do.
Thank you. This is addressed to Roseland Residential. To whom it may concern, we the undersigned members of the Revere City Council write to you today to formally request that a representative from Roseland Residential appear before our council to give an update on the master plan dated November 6, 2019, and specifically to ask that your property management company prioritize transportation improvement projects previously discussed to help mitigate the traffic on Salem Street and North Revere. This is the second request for an update, as the city council on February 7, 2022, informally asked through a motion of the Ward Six Counselor, that the property management company of Overlook Ridge provide the city of Revere with an update regarding the eventual reconfiguration of the entrance to Overlook Ridge and access to Route One. In conjunction with the master plan presented to the city of Revere in 2019, Roseland Residential suggested that the following transportation improvements were in the works at a cost to the property management company, given the significant impacts to local traffic on the North Revere neighborhood as a direct result of the Overlook Ridge apartment buildings. These are their recommendations I'm reading. The elimination of the existing Lynn Street on-ramp, off-ramps from the Route One northbound to Lynn Street, construction of a new on-and-off ramp system to Overlook Ridge Drive that provides a safer connection than the current Lynn Street ramps, reconstruction and realignment of portions of the existing Overlook Ridge Drive to support Route One access and to be completed related, and to be, to completed related roadway improvements, installation of a fully signalized intersection with pedestrian safety improvements at a relocated intersection of Overlook Ridge Drive and Salem Street, reconstruction and realignment of Salem Street in front of Overlook Ridge, and the installation of new MBTA bus stops and shelters on Salem Street to support the public transportation needs and to allow for buses and local traffic to operate more efficiently and safely. As traffic returns to pre-pandemic levels, combined with the fact that more residential apartment buildings on the Malden side of the property have been constructed, constructed over these last two years, the time is now for Roseland to step up and make good on these commitments to transportation improvements for the neighborhood. The residents of North Revere who live on Salem Street and on the Abudding Streets have seen a significant increase in traffic as Overlook Ridge has been built out, yet they have received little tangible mitigation for this encroachment on their quality of life. The traffic improvements described in your 2019 master plan are not only palatable but are sorely needed today, not two years from now, not five years from now, but as soon as possible. There's a constant flow of vehicles entering and exiting Overlook Ridge Drive at any given time, and during the morning and evening rush hours, many North Revere residents traversing Salem Street report being cut off by erratic drivers from Overlook Ridge as tenants seek to enter or exit the property in a rush to get to and from Route One. We strongly encourage you to collaborate with the appropriate officials at Mastaut and the cities of Revere and Malden to move swiftly on access to Route One through Overlook Ridge, as well as constructing the signalized intersection at Overlook Ridge Drive and Salem Street. Both of these enhancements will have a tremendously positive impact on the traffic flow of Salem Street and will help to improve the quality of life for our residents who live in North Revere. We look forward to your response. Thank you. So I apologize for reading that, all of that into the record, but just so you guys know what we're signing on to, I, this whole thing is relative to traffic on Salem Street, and how Overlook Ridge has basically done whatever they wanted for the last 20 years. They've built out everything. Yes, we got a fire station. We didn't get much else, other than the fire station, and we were promised the world, but never did they deliver on anything. So I feel that we, as a city council, the state and the city of Malden and the city of Revere, we need to come together and really hold these people's feet to the fire, because obviously, traffic is one of the most, you know, the quality of life issues that we've been hearing about. And we really need to hold these people accountable, these developers, these large-scale developers like Roseland accountable to fulfill their obligations to the people of our city. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Serena. Counsel Rizzo.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is one of the reasons, I, I think this is excellent, and I plan on voting yes and signing on to it. I commend Counselor Serena for doing a tremendous job for laying out this letter, and, and I believe what will be our collective positions on Roseland. But this is really one of the reasons why I have a lot of mistrust to developers that come into this community. You know, this goes back, Counselor Serena alludes to a master plan from 2019. He can go back 15 years before that, which is when it really started and the promises were being made. They have fulfilled none of what they promised the city, none. They may have built a fire station, a bay for Revere and a bay for Malden, but look at what they've built up there. Look, look at the hardship. Try, if you never go up, to try to get on Route One, heading north or south, going up Salem Street, try going up there sometime during peak hours and see what you see now, as compared to what was back there. So, you know, now we can't even get them to appear before the council. I mean, this is a disgrace. So this is why whenever any development comes into the city, we have to have things in writing, and there has to be a mechanism for penalties if there is not compliance with what they promised the city. That's all I have to say, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Rizzo. Counsel Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I can appreciate Counselor Serena's thoughts and his efforts. Now, this goes back to 2003. Being the oldest guy in the city council, I was here when that started. And we were promised, we were promised that in 2009, they were going to start all the reconstruction, and that they would be finished by 2014. Gee, I think it's 2023 now, and what have you seen? Zero, nothing. I don't trust them. I know they've changed management companies since the place has been sold. I do not trust them. I wouldn't give them the right time of day. They promised us a hotel next to the fire station area where the garage is now. Do we see a hotel there for any businesses in the city of Revere? Zero. I wouldn't give them the right time of day. So I appreciate this. I say good luck. And, you know, I'm just flabbergasted of who they are and what they've gotten away with, and just don't like it. Thank you.
Counsel Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. With, through you to Counsel Serena, and, you know, I fully support this, and I know that this has been a long-going problem. I remember Counsel Patch up here, you know, really trying to get them to appear in front of the council and do, and participate in their end of the bargain. I do want to give everyone, you know, especially the people that are watching, you know, this is where, you know, we are, you know, a lot of the newer projects that do come, where, you know, similar to, there's a project where making sure they can't convert to apartments and things like that. You know, I don't know what loophole they got through, but it seems like they, they found a loophole and they're utilizing it. And, you know, that's, that's the mistake that probably happened a long time ago. And I think I have a lot of confidence in the councils that are up here. We've been, we've been duped, but for the most part, we, we don't, we don't let it happen again. So we just need to make sure that we're on top of that, and the residents have to make sure that they keep us on top of that. Thank you.
Counsel Morabito.
Thank you. You know, far too often, we have businesses, developers, they come into the city, okay? They're in the initiation phase, and they have, they're fully engaged with the city council, the mayor, the community. They're, they make all these, as Counsel Serena said, empty promises. And then what happens is they get the okay, and then they just vanish. And every, and this, let this be a message to everyone who wants to do business with us, whether it's H Y M, Roseland, down the beach, that we're gonna circle back. If they don't respond, we need to take, put our foot down and keep at it. And I am more than honored to sign this. Thank you, Counsel Serena, for putting this forth.
Let's go back to Counsel. Thank you, Counsel Morabito. Counsel Serena, you have something else?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to kind of go off what Counsel Keefe said, you know, the meeting that I had with my North Revere residents recently was regarding the Salem Street development, the redevelopment of the nursing home. And to sit in that room with my residents and have this conversation where a, you know, a reputable developer was presenting to them plans for the redevelopment of the nursing home, and all of them, you know, sitting there and, you know, not, the, the expressions on their faces, I genuinely felt awful, and I agree with why they didn't want to hear it. Because they, as they said to me afterwards, you know, we've been down this road before with Roseland, and Roseland promised all of these things too, and they never, you know, followed through. So what, my point being is that when we don't bring developers like Roseland back before us and hold them accountable, it does lead to that mistrust, and you can't build those relationships with residents and people coming into the city trying to do good. So just, I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Counsel. If I may, I, I want to appreciate, I appreciate the motion, and I want to commend, commend you on writing that letter. I couldn't agree more, and that's why sometimes I am hesitant when develops, developers do come in here. And rather than pushing it through, okay, if something takes a little bit longer, okay, to get through, well, I would rather dot our i's and cross our t's here, because it just behooves me how a development like that, okay, that was approved, and all of a sudden made these empty promises, and all of a sudden, you know, they get developed, they're charging astronomical rents up there, and then when we're asking for them to just comply with what was proposed, there's no one to be found. So I, you know, I agree with Counsel Rizzo, that, you know, we need, as a council, to take a couple of steps back and make sure that we, make sure that all the things are done before that permit is given. Because after it, okay, we don't know. And I want to say that I commend that motion once again. So that's all I have to say on that. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 24, motion presented by Counsel Keefe that the mayor be requested to gain permission from Mastaut to enable the city to clean and repaint the unkempt overpasses in Revere.
Counsel Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President, Counsel, Mr. President. Similar to Counsel McKenna's motion, I have requested, we, you know, myself, Counsel Serena, and Counsel McKenna, we share a lot of the entry points into the city, Counsel Fiori as well, with bridges and overpasses. I've requested DOT to, to clean up the Park Ave Bridge, the Mountain Ave Bridge, the Sergeant Street Bridge, Dale Street Bridge, to clean them up and make them look presentable, especially as they're gateways into our community. Unfortunately, these, these requests have gone unanswered. So at this point, you know, I know that there probably could be a cost to the city of having to have the work done. I'm not asking them to recondition the bridges, but I would, I would like to see some, some fresh coats of paint, maybe some concrete that has to be repaired. If we have to take that on and find the means to do it, I'd like to see it done, because it's not fair to the residents that live on those areas that have to see that right out of their front doors. But it's also not fair to, it's not a fair image to the city to have people entering our city and having to see those, I mean, they're, they're in really, physically, sorry, from an apparent standpoint, really poor shape. So I'd like to see something be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to add to that list, Locke, you want to go, lovely? Okay. I would like to just add to the list, if it's okay with Counsel Keefe. Underneath Rita Singer Bridge, coming into Beauchamp, and under the Winthrop Ave Bridge, where the trucks turn around, it's horrendous with graffiti. Oh, okay, thank you.
Counsel Novoseltsky, and then Counsel Sebastian.
I know the city has taken, made an effort to do some of this painting of the underpasses. I know they did a mural up in Massagen Street, and they, and some folks in the neighborhood down in Ward Five did the underpass over Route One, 1A, right by Gibson Park. So, you know, the city will expend some money to provide the paint, and if the neighbors want to go out, make an effort, make a project out of it, go ahead. You know, for me, I don't have any overpasses or underpasses in Revere, in my ward. So I'm kind of lucky. But, you know, in general, maybe something, we can get the residents involved in helping keeping our city clean, and clean it up, and get rid of these graffiti locations. Thank you.
Counsel Sevestry.
So are we just looking to slap some paint under the bridges, on the walls themselves? Because through you to the motion maker, I believe that there are state certifications, state, things that have to be certified, just like when they do the Tobin Bridge to come underneath, netting proper, no? Okay. Right. But I think they're asking for both metal and concrete, no? So, so there would be state certificates and certifications through workers that would have to, we just couldn't have our neighborhood go do it, or our DPW workers go do it unless they were qualified to do so?
Point of information, Mr. President. The sidewalks that I have mentioned are three feet, and they have turnarounds with gigantic trucks. It would be dangerous for residents to clean it up under the, it's under the Winthrop Ave turnaround to go into, I think it's, it's American Legion Highway. So, so I think it's dangerous for, it would have to be the state to do it. Thank you.
Counsel Serena.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to, through you, I want to thank Counselor Keefe for this motion. It's a great motion. And all I can hear in my head is the late Priscilla Nickerson's voice, because she, when I worked at the State House, would call every spring, and if we could add, she would always call about the, the bird, so under, if we could ask them to clean the underpasses as well, where the bird catchers are, because the, you know, that, those all get dirty with bird mess and whatnot this time of year. So I'd like to add that, if that would be okay with the maker of the motion.
Counsel Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd be happy to add that. I, you know, and again, it talks about the upkeep of these overpasses. It's kind of vague. But what I would also say is, and I, and I agree, Counsel Sevestry, you know, I don't want a resident from Mountain Ave hanging off the side of the bridge, scraping paint down, dropping it on cars on Route One. I know that that not only could be dangerous, it could be, it could be a serious issue. But I do think that we could see, and again, I'm hoping that this grabs someone in the DOT's attention, and maybe they want to jump in, or someone at a level to want to jump in and take this on and say, no, we don't want Revere touching our bridges. That would be the hope. So I mean, again, I know a lot of councils are shrugging, saying, yeah, good luck, keep, keep, keep dreaming. But the truth is, is if we can do, even if it's the minimum, and I'm not suggesting that we just grab a can of spray paint, but if there's some sort of, if there's some sort of way, we have very talented people that work for our city. You realize that when you have the amount of people that we have, there's some people that can do some seriously good things, is there a way to do it that it is safely, that they're not going to affect vehicles crossing Route One, so there's an air, some sort of aerosol, some sort of a spray that won't drip down, that they can at least give it a little, you know, a little bit of glamour, rather than, it's, they're really in poor condition, and we've been. been talking about them for a while. And I know that even when you talk about, people might say, this lead paint, you know, I get it, we're probably not going to have to scrape them, can't scrape them down. If we can just add a little to them, I think it'll go a long way, because they're really in poor shape. Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed on the motion? So ordered. Next motion.
Calendar item number 25, motion presented by Council President Visconti that the mayor be requested to utilize ARPA funds to donate a set amount of money to each nonprofit city youth sports organization. The pandemic has had a tremendous financial impact over the past three years on the city's youth sports programs, to the point where organizations are having difficulty operating effectively and lacking the ability to purchase much-needed equipment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If I can have just a moment on this, the major reason I came up with this motion is, you know, the last couple of years, our nonprofit youth organizations rely heavily on donations. That being said, the Carnival, now whether some people may approve or disapprove or have personal opinions about the Carnival in our city, they give quite a bit of money to our nonprofit youth organizations every year. That has been non-existent for the past two years, which is really affecting our youth sports, and I'm sure Councilor Keith, who is heavily involved in youth sports as well, could confirm that. But it behooves me to believe that we can't give a little to our youth sports programs and, you know, let them know that we're supporting that. Now, this is not only, keep in mind, when these donations are given to the youth sports, it also gives people the ability, it gives those, the organization's ability to scholarship kids that can't afford to pay for the youth program, whether it's their gloves, their registration, tuition, whatever the case may be. So I think it's something that is needed, and I welcome any comments on the motion.
Point of information. Just so you know, I just got, I was approached by someone that the Carnival is, they're trying to secure Suffolk Downs in the summer to come in, and...
It hasn't been confirmed.
It hasn't been confirmed yet, but...
Yes. Councilor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, you mentioned it, being on a number of the youth boards in the city, I don't want to be in conflict, but I'll just, just to say, and I know Council Rizzo, also as a mayor, he recognized the amount of the funding that went from the McCarthy-Triphony Fund. It was huge for us. I mean, when I was on these boards, and I still am with some, the McCarthy-Triphony Fund really helped, it was relied upon, and the majority of that funding, actually, all of it was intended, and it did, and then some, all of these boards, they have people that play for free. And the reason being is because they cannot afford the tuition or the enrollment fee of a league, and all of that, and then some, and then the donations from yourselves and us that we all donate, it goes towards, a lot of it goes towards paying to have kids that cannot afford to pay. So that money, this money will be, I'm sure, if we're able to allocate it, or if the mayor's able to allocate it, will go a long way towards really helping out kids that can't afford to register. And then, of course, equipment and whatnot, just, it'll go a real long way, so I'd be very much in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Sylvesteri.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just possibly to add a subsequent motion to this motion, I was reached out today by the school, someone on the school PTOs, which they have a horrible time raising funds and ways to do proms and yearbooks and whatnot, and they were asking for some help, and I would just request that we could add them to the motion.
I have no objection to that. My reason for this was really, because I know people are going to start wanting to come in and request that as well, right? My major concern was to go to the nonprofit organizations in our city, so I have no problem adding that to this, to this motion. So yes, I'd have no problem amending it as well. Council Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know the ARPA money is a favorite thing right now, you know, to reach out to, and I think there's a great idea, and when I saw this, I said, you know, what about our veterans? We have four veteran organizations that have facilities that haven't been able to raise funds for two years, since, and the American Legion has been closed for two years because they, number one, of the COVID, and number two, they haven't been able to get into the building because the city is renovating the front of the building and the front door. So they are still closed. The VFW in Beaumont, the VFW in Montola Post, the Jewish War Veterans, we are, all these veteran organizations are in trouble, and hopefully that the mayor can find the funds, and hopefully we can add them into this.
Mr. Chair, just point of information, I believe the mayor is working on the veterans' posts. We sat down with the VFW post last week. We've talked to American Legion, we've talked to the Montola Post, and I believe we are working on that, so.
Great, and I'll leave that up to the mayor to do so, to be honest with you. Like the previous motion, I'd rather not just water this out, and there's nothing that I, I respect your request, I really do, but I think, and I respect all the veterans, that's something that the mayor and veteran officer Sylvesteri have been talking about. I would prefer not to put that in this motion, okay, and request that be discussed outside for further discussion, so. All in favor? You want to, all in favor, oh, Councilor Rizzo, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I'll just be very brief, but just to touch on, actually, what Council McKenna and Councilor Keith had talked about, the McCarthy-Triphony Fund almost single-handedly helped support just about every facet of youth sports here in the city for so many years, and I'm encouraged to hear, I think John Flynn may have reached out to, okay, well, I know that he was looking to reach out to you and possibly Councilor Fiori to talk about bringing back the Carnival, and again, I know people have different opinions of that, but I think if we tell them, you know, look, you need adequate, you know, adequate police presence there and so on and so forth, he would have no problem with that. And the byproduct of what he brings is tens of thousands of dollars, so your motion is obviously, I'm going to support it 100%, but to help out the city, because eventually, as Councilor Fiori said earlier, when we get this budget, we're going to have to look at scaling back so that we can fund some of these programs like this, instead of adding six-figure jobs here, six-figure jobs there. We can start talking about taking some of that money and putting it toward youth sports, or putting it back in the taxpayers' pockets, whether it's the 3% fees or whatever it is. So we have to take looks at this, but I do support the motion. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Any other questions? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Late communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Molly McGee to the Human Rights Commission.
Mr. President? Did we, through you to the city clerk, did we receive a resume? I didn't see one in my packet.
I'll double-check Minitrack, just to make sure there was an attachment. I don't, I don't have...
I mean, I think if we're going to be serious about these appointments, we really not need to start looking into resumes, backgrounds. I mean, this Human Rights Commission has proven to be very divisive, there's a lot of controversy, and I would like to know philosophies and backgrounds when people come before this council. I mean, I find it very concerning that this board will not salute the flag, when we have people that have fought overseas, Councilor Sylvesteri, Councilor Rizzo, and Councilor Nowosowski in the military as well. And the basic way to respect them is to respect that flag. So I have my reservations, and I really think that we should start taking this responsibility seriously, because the divisiveness in the community with these types of issues is very, very saddening.
Okay. Any other questions? Oh, Council Maravito.
Yeah, I have to add my two cents. So, point of information, so human rights has to do with everyone's rights. People like Councilor Rizzo, Council Sylvesteri, Council Nowosowski, going to war, going to the army is a selfless act. They do it. So each and every one of us that weren't in war or did not join the army, they fought for us so we can have a voice. So we have the right to do whatever we want without being prosecuted, penalized, and that is the reason why there's a Human Rights Commission. And I think you need to realize, the reason of them fighting for our country is for the rights we have.
I'd just like to see a resume, and I'd like to hear people's philosophies, and that's it. The more information we have, the better we are equipped to deal with these issues.
Council, I couldn't agree more. Typically, on appointments like this, there usually is a resume attached, and I would like to see a resume as well. So this is going to get referred to appointments. No further business. Our meeting is adjourned.